Looks like we have a quorum. I would like to invite you all, or I would like to welcome you all to the, what day is it? Wednesday, July 21st, 2021, virtual meeting of Zoom on the Thurston County Commissioners. So, welcome you all, and let's get started with introductions. Uh, looks like Eric, you're first up.
Eric Casino, District Two.
Scott?
Nelson, District Three.
Uh, Don? Looks like Don's figuring, oh, there it comes. Don, can you introduce yourself, please? You got us, Don? Let's go Doug.
Excuse me, Doug Carmen, District Two.
And I believe that's Kevin?
Kevin Pestinger, District One.
Don, can you hear us now?
I can. John Dehan, District One.
Thank you. Good to have you with us. And I am Jim Simmons, District Three. And staff, we have Jennifer Davis, Paulie Stoker, and Andrew Defogus. Thank you all for being here. So I'm looking to get an approval of the agenda.
I'm moved.
Back in.
It's been approved, and the agenda's been approved and seconded. Are there any adjustments, anything to change? additions? Okay, we're moving on. We're moving on to our public communication section for this. For those who wish to speak for this virtual meeting, please choose the raise your hand option if you wish to address the planning commission. If you are dialing in, press number nine to raise your hand. The chair host will unmute you when it is your turn to speak. Make sure you also, make sure you also choose number six to unmute yourself. The three-minute timer will show on one of the video screens to help keep track of time. If you have issues speaking and being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785 to make your public comment. Um, when you do speak, please, uh, let us know who you are and where you are calling from. So let me figure, looks like we have. Let's start out, looks like you're up, Phyllis, Phyllis Farrell. Oops. Okay.
Can you hear me?
We've got you now. Thank you.
Thank you. Phyllis Farrell, Sunwood Lakes and Unincorporated Thurston County. And greetings, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment again on the draft SMP. Uh, I've spoken many publicly many times, actually since 2017, and submitted lots of written comments. I'm trying not to be discouraged, but I'm still waiting and hoping that my comments and suggestions based on science and best management practices will be included in the draft SMP language. As a reminder, the environmental advocates have asked that the draft should maintain or improve shoreline buffers, reduce armoring, regulate and limit the expansion of aquaculture. We'd also suggest phasing out the use of plastics in aquaculture operations, uh, and to require reports from aquaculture operations and other shoreline projects with metrics of no net loss. Uh, I've never been able to find any kind of metrics about, uh, what they're measuring and how they're determining that no net loss is happening when it's obviously not happening. Uh, and to address sea level rise projections when permitting and to maintain adequate marine buffers. The SMP requires no net loss of ecological function. Tribes and environmental groups are advocating for a standard of net gain since it's obvious that no net loss isn't working as demonstrated by declines in water quality, shoreline ecological function, loss of eel grass beds, forced fish habitat, and salmon and orca recovery. Please consider adopting a standard of net gain in the SMP. Previously, I suggested some metrics to indicate gains and losses. Also, the Department of Ecology requires as part of the deliverals in the following documents. The Cumulative Impacts Analysis Report, addressing measures designed to offset cumulative impacts, and B, a restoration plan including timeline and benchmarks for implementation. I've been unable to see or find those. Perhaps Andrew can steer me in that direction, but, uh, uh, hopefully that would address some of my concerns. Uh, hopefully it'll be included with the draft SMP. I really appreciate the service of you planning commissioner members. You have a lot to read and consider and hours in meetings. You're guided by staff, but you also consider public comments. Please request or direct staff to reflect in the draft SMP the numerous public comments from individuals wanting protections for our shorelines, marine waters, and public access. Thank you all for your service.
Thanks, Phyllis. I have, uh, Ann Van Swerengen. Oh, is that her?
Yes, that's correct. My name is Ann Van Swerengen, and I represent five Thurston environmental groups who are concerned about converting shorelines to other uses. And we would like to know just what the SMP will state about mitigation. Will mitigation be carefully designed to replace all ecological functions that are lost by development? And will mitigation be located in areas where it can actually function? Also, will mitigation be monitored and maintained until, for instance, plants or runoff reduction measures are fully established? And I'm sorry, I didn't say I'm from Northeast Olympia. Well, about buffer widths, when buffer widths are reduced in size, can the county prove that mitigation will result in no net loss of environmental functions? Will increased buffer width be required when a site has conditions that require protecting habitat's functions and values? For instance, to protect habitats or seeds identified in the county code? Or when land has slopes or minimal vegetative cover? Will those buffers be increased? And about aquaculture, the overarching focus for aquaculture practices must be avoidance or minimization of negative impacts. Is the county establishing monitoring procedures to ensure aquaculture operations are in compliance with permit conditions? Uh, please refer to the previous comments that I have submitted. I don't see any of those comments being considered in the draft SMP. And again, no net loss is not being reflected in the draft language. Why is that? What metrics are you going to use to, to, are you going to require be used to measure ecological functions and processes to determine no net loss? Lastly, please remember the SMP guidelines state the county has an obligation to assure that no net loss of ecological functions will be achieved within the SMP. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, John Pennett.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name's John Pennett. I live on Rich Road in East Olympia. I hope you can hear me.
You're good.
Uh, one of my biggest concerns, and of course, I have cumulatively with footage along the Deschutes River, nearly a half a mile of riverfront, of which, of course, I open it up and I want the public to engage and enjoy it. It's public waters. It has the right to be there. Essentially, the SMP is beneficial to everyone in the county uh, in terms of not only wanting to protect the environment, but let people enjoy the environment. It's something that is nature and it should be well taken care of. I would think there's certain elements that we need to upgrade about the maintenance factor, about removing log jams that have accumulated and actually are supposed to be cleared out of the way for areas that are considered navigable waters. But one of the biggest concerns I have has to do with, uh, an issue of public involvement, public participation. Now, I realize this document, you've been working on it, or I should say the group's been working on it for years. In fact, I'm not sure there's ever going to be a stop of work on it, but I think the, my particular thought is, is that as of so far with all the work that's going on, there's plan changes, uh, and certainly at least the named categories, if not uses of property. Uh, every property owner that is going to be directly affected because they have shoreline needs to have a complete notice, including the exact impact of what the current element is and can use their property for, and what their future element would be if the SMP would be adopted, uh, in terms of a draft version. It seems like so far the county has maintained, we're going to be quiet until virtually the last minute. Maybe we'll offer you one time at an inconvenient spot to be able to make a comment. And then what most people don't know about, this oftentimes comments, they, they go on a matrix. And staff seems to decide whether or not the comment has validity or not before being presented to the commissioners or even going further. So I would like to make sure, and I would ask that you as a commission encourage that the county take a program of multiple meetings in multiple locations over a several-month timeframe to make sure everyone has an opportunity to participate and have their input about what they think and what they learn about the SMP and how it affects them. So, thank you for your service. Encourage that county to actually give public participation. Thank you.
Um, Bob Lanowitt, you had your hand up earlier. I don't know if I lowered it or if you did, but if you'd like to speak, please do. They might not let, let you in.
Well, thank you. Can you hear me? Good. I would like to speak. Um, I have not, I, before, I have not talked about postcards. Other people have talked about postcards, but it never has been in my agenda to talk about postcards. But in the read-ahead memo for today's meeting, I read that postcards would be sent to property owners that are most impacted. So that would mean that that's a subset of property owners that have, that are on the shoreline. To achieve a more comprehensive citizen awareness, I believe that postcards should be sent to all shoreline owners, shoreline property owners. Because I believe that this SMP has an impact on everyone, not just certain people. I also believe that a second postcard should be sent that is very specific to those property owners whose SED has changed, not some vague language, but something just as if your taxes were going to increase. I have another comment that has to do with something that I've mentioned before, and I believe one or more Commissioners has mentioned in the, in the past, that there has been no mention of to what degree the Thurston County Shoreline Management Plan is more or less restrictive than the WAC. Third, there's also been no mention of recent time of when and if there will be a user pamphlet that would accompany the SMP. I believe I heard that maybe a user pamphlet would come sometime later, but that's like ordering a tool, uh, something that you have to put together that you get in the mail, and the instructions would come somewhat later. Not, not a good plan as far as I'm concerned. So, thank you. You have a lot of work to do ahead of you, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you.
Thank you, sir. Not seeing any other hands. Is there anybody? Oh, there we go. Um, ooh, another comment. Uh, Diane Taylor?
Hi, Commissioners, can you hear me? Great. Hi, my name's Deani Taylor. I was born and raised here in the county, and I'm also a fifth-generation shellfish farmer in general counsel with my family business, Taylor Shellfish Farms. I just wanted to really quickly address part of, uh, the memo today regarding remaining policy items which considers muscle wraps. I just wanted to reiterate our support of the SMP draft as it is, which sufficiently addresses muscle wrap and other culture types. Um, we don't believe additional standards are necessary, uh, to meet the goals of the SMP. Uh, and some of the information in the memo comes from permit conditions on one of our muscle forms. If the county, uh, wants to consider additional regulations, we are always happy to provide additional information and answer any questions you might have. Thanks so much for your time and again for all your work on the SMP. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. Kristy?
Good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
We're good.
Kristy White, I live in the Delphi Valley. A couple things, uh, this evening. First of all, the next big code you're going to, you know, already have looked at some, but we'll be looking at further, the wireless code. Um, I wanted to let you know that, um, those of us who have great interest in it have put forth to you the planning commission, as well as Jennifer Davis just a little bit ago, um, some recommendations of people who are interested and to be on that committee and some short biography. So I just wanted to give you that informational piece. The second thing is I wanted to echo the previous speakers about notification to citizens for shoreline master plan. And to give an example of, you know, there's a ballot item, Proposition One, for the EMS levy lid. Well, what I got in the mail duplicated several times was a beautiful color triple fold-out document which talked about what the EMS levy is, um, issues, et cetera, et cetera. And it is got the Thurston County logo on it. And I'm assuming it used Thurston County postage. So my thought is, is that if this can be done for a levy and the magnitude, as the other speakers have indicated about shoreline master plan, that some similar document should be sent to, to folks because somewhere the money came from somewhere for this medical document. And, um, I, I think something similar at a very minimum could be done for shoreline master plan. So just wanted to point that out. Hopefully you guys have all seen this triple folded flyer in your mailbox. So that was just my thought on shoreline master plan. So that's all I have for you this evening. Thanks for listening again.
Thank you. Uh, John Woodford?
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, I'll be very brief. I, I think staff has presented you a totally unrealistic time schedule, given the amount of material that has been, uh, added to the, um, meeting agenda in just the very last few days, a whole new draft of the SMP, which, uh, I'm questioning whether very many of you even had a chance to, to review the whole thing, and multiple other documents. And then talking about setting a public hearing for September, I think this is just totally unrealistic. And I'm not going to even go into the content of those documents, but it's an overwhelming amount of new material that's been presented to you. And I hope that you will give yourselves the time to really thoughtfully review that material. And I'll just make one other comment about the postcard. There was, uh, in the, in the materials for this week, um, there was, uh, some mention of content of the postcards. I hope you will ask to see an actual copy of that postcard and not just, um, this is, this is what we're going to put in it. You have the right to see that postcard, uh, in its entirety. Thank you. That's it for tonight.
Thanks, Mr. Woodford. I'm not seeing any other hands. Is there anybody else? Any other participants that would like to speak? Anybody else? Okay. I hope I didn't miss you. We're moving on. Um, I'd like to get an approval of the meeting minutes for July 7th, 2021.
I'm moved.
Will we accept the minutes for July?
I'll need a second.
I guess I'll second.
Is there any discussions or changes needed to be made?
Yeah, Raul, hear, hear me?
Yep.
Excellent.
Yeah, um, Mr. Woodford, I just, um, mentioned the postcard. We did request.
Hold on, Raul. Is this, are you, is this referring to the meeting minutes of July 7th?
Right, it is. But in the minutes, it doesn't address that we requested to see the postcard. It only addresses the language.
Okay.
And in the minutes also doesn't mention that we requested to identify prior to the hearings and provide us a copy of the overlay of the parcels that were being impacted by the change in designation or so-called the 2700. That's not in the minutes. I would like that to be corrected.
So, this is where I get a little confused. So do we, and Jennifer, I guess I'm looking for some direction, or do we vote on the amended? Is that Raul just? Mentioned?
Yeah, this is Jennifer. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, yeah, you can vote on the two amendments that Raul said about the planning commission requesting to see those two items, and you can ask for those to be added to the minutes and then adopt those as amended.
I'm not sure they got all of that, but so we're asking for a motion to adopt insert Raul's comments into the, um, July 7th, 2021 minutes.
You can take both separate. One, one motion, as I understand it, is to change the minutes to reflect that the Commissioners requested an actual mock-up of the postcard.
But that's it.
Somebody seconded? I guess I seconded since that was Raul's motion, right?
Yeah, okay. So is, is there any comments on that before we vote?
Yeah, I think that's already reflected in the minutes. If you go to page two, line 19, Ms. Davis shared the draft land over the postcard notification language was previously reviewed. Planning Commissioners asked to see the language again. Staff will provide it next meeting. Mr. Defogus will check to see if the map indicating what parcels are to receive notification will be ready at that time as well.
Okay.
Does that work for you, Raul? Would you, would you like to, would you consider removing your motion?
Since we've mentioned it like that, I'll go ahead and remove it. However, uh, that's fine. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So then
The problem is
to ours. Approved.
The problem is the minutes reflect the words brought, where the request was actually to have a mock-up. And I, I've spent 40 years in marketing, and I know that how you put the, the document together is very important and how the impact is. I personally wanted, wanted and asked for at the last minute a mock-up of the doc, of the postcard. And this doesn't say that. It just says the words, which is what they did in the letter.
Okay, it's starting to burn a little foggy head. So the motion is to request a mock, put in the minute, sorry. Put in the meeting minutes that we're, we're, we are requesting a mock-up to view a mock-up of the postcard. Have I got that right?
Correct.
Okay, so we have that on the table right now. Uh, any other discussion? So all those in favor of that, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, so we will add that to the minutes. Now, I'm looking for an approval of the meeting minutes for, and we have a, we have a motion and a second to approve the meetings now. Is there any comments or any other comments on that?
The amended minutes.
Amended, thank you, Doug. All those in favor of the approving the amended minutes for July 7th, 2021, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Wooed up. Okay, so we're moving forward. Um, Andrew, you're up for the work session for the shoreline master program.
Okay, great. Uh, good evening, Chair Simmons and Commissioners. Andrew Defogus, Community Planning and Economic Development Department. So tonight I've got several items for you. I'm going to go ahead and launch a presentation. Okay, hopefully you're looking at a PDF of a PowerPoint because that's less likely to crash than PowerPoint itself. All right, so, um, the planning commission is close to the finish line here of finishing a public hearing draft and setting a public hearing. Once that happens, we will be launching an extended public outreach period to include a virtual open house, um, outreach, direct outreach to citizens most affected, and broader outreach to the county citizens at large, um, and also outreach to interested parties. So tonight, uh, we're going to talk about a few remaining policy items that I'm wanting to get some guidance on from the planning commission, which detail of which can be found in the memo put out July 14th and also in this presentation. Uh, we will review the postcard notification for the open house. We will be looking at the postcard itself. So everyone who really wants to see what that looks like, I got good news for you. We're going to take a look at that later. So I'm excited for that. Um, I will also give you a brief introduction into the public hearing materials that were, uh, produced and finalized last week and see what questions you have on those. And then if there's time, um, circle back and talk about a couple, uh, previously asked questions that Commissioners had in previous meetings that I just said I'll get back to you. Not sure. Um, I have some updated information for you, just to close some loops. Okay, so we'll start out with some of the remaining policy items in the SMP draft. There's three of them, which were in the memo. One is industrial uses in the draft SMP. One is net pen and muscle wrap aquaculture standards. And the third is fences in the draft SMP. So the first, uh, we'll talk about is industrial uses. So these, uh, in the draft SMP are currently proposed to be allowed in the urban conservancy and shoreline residential, shoreline environment designations. And also, uh, industry has to be in allowed use in the zoning district where, where those uses would be proposed. So we've heard from ecology, and we've also had questions from citizens as to which shoreline environment designations industrial uses would be most appropriate in. Uh, ecology has suggested that the county consider that the rural conservancy shoreline environment designation may be more appropriate uh, based on the fact that the shoreline residential said shoreline environment designation largely is focused on residential development, and also that shorelines and urban conservancy are already close to areas that are already developed by nature of being in urban growth areas. So they may already be more developed and may potentially not be, um, may not play nicely with industrial uses, for lack of a better word. Um, so taking a look at what the current shoreline master program says for context, uh, currently the only shoreline environment designation where they're allowed is in the urban shoreline environment designation. And that designation is actually proposed to go away because we really don't have any urban shorelines in the current SMP. Um, and, and industrial uses are currently prohibited in all the other, uh, shoreline environment designations. So looking at what the, the WAC say, the Washington Administrative Code. So looking at what the, the WACs say, the Washington Administrative Code and the shoreline guidelines from the Department of Ecology. So looking at each of the shoreline environment designations, for the shoreline residential designation, actually, the, the purpose of that, as laid out in the WAC, does not reference industrial uses whatsoever. It states that the purpose is to accommodate residential development and pertinent structures, public access, and recreational uses. For the urban conservancy designation, the WACs say that that designation could be appropriate for industrial lammers, which are limited areas of more intense rural development. So if you have an area that is already developed with industrial, you know, dense industrial uses, potentially, that's a, that's an appropriate designation to make. For the rural conservancy shoreline environment designation, the WACs do make allowance for low-intensity water-oriented industrial uses in areas where they have been located in the past, or communities that possess the conditions and services to support that use. The WACs state for the natural shoreline environment designation that new industrial uses should not be allowed. And for the aquatic designation, that they should be allowed over water, only for water-dependent uses for public access, or excuse me. The aquatic designation didn't really, again, didn't say anything specific about industry, but talked more generally about overwater structures, and gave these allowances for when they should be allowed. So water-dependent uses, public access, and ecological restoration. So, really, the question comes down to where the draft SMP will allow industrial uses, and that's what I'm hoping to get some, some guidance from, from the planning commission. So the questions essentially are to consider whether to allow, or excuse me, to prohibit new industrial uses in the shoreline residential said, where the draft currently allows them. Consider whether to allow them in the urban conservancy said, which they're currently allowed in, and then consider whether to allow them in the rural conservancy said, as outlined in the Washington Administrative Code, which the draft currently does not allow. So essentially, it's just taking, taking the poll from planning commission as to whether those, whether the allowances for industrial uses should be altered for any of the shoreline environment designations in the draft. So I'll pause there and see if there are any questions, or if anyone has, wants to make any suggestions.
I can't think, I can't think of any reason to have industrial uses in shoreline residential. So as it's stated, I would suggest that we prohibit there.
Andy, do we know of any industrial uses in the shoreline residential SED currently?
I don't think so, not that I'm aware of. So I went back and looked at the inventory and characterization, and I looked at, you know, the, the matrix for all the different specific reaches, and then how they had been designated. And anywhere where the rationale for making a designation included industry, it was, it was urban conservancy. So I am not personally aware of any. And, you know, we know that the, you know, the, the purpose of the shoreline residential SED does not appear to be copacetic with industry, just based on, you know, from a couple slides ago. It makes no mention of it, and the purpose of it is supposed to be residential development. And that's something that citizens have pointed out, and again, that's something that ecology brought to our attention as well.
What about in the urban, urban conservancy? Is there any current industry in those?
There are a few. So there are a couple. It was, you know, without actually going out on the site and kind of seeing what they are, or looking at the zoning code, I'm not sure if what they would be is considered commercial or industrial. Those things are lumped together when it comes to assigning an SED. Both commercial and industrial uses can be justification for doing an urban conservancy said. So, that said, for those areas where industrial uses were noted as part of being present in a reach, urban conservancy was the designation given by, by what I was able to find. So it wasn't that they were necessarily, you might recall that urban conservancy, a lot of times, is urban growth area, but it doesn't have to be. So if it has intense development in it already, it already has commercial or industrial development, the urban conservancy designation could be assigned, even if it's not in an urban growth area. And that was the case of what I found. There were some, there are some, believe they are like storage, like a big, you know, self-storage facility out off Mud Bay Road on the shoreline that is urban conservancy, and that's outside of an urban growth area, and also in the Nisqually Valley as well. There's like an RV, RV park, I believe, that is, you know, it's, it's designated urban conservancy, but it is not in an urban growth area. So it looks like when they went through and did the inventory characterization, there was a, there was an eye on that. And so some areas that were, already had that type of development, either commercial or industrial, were given that, that said, of urban conservancy.
Well, even if we did allow some of this, which I'm not sure that I would want to, but even if we did, that would not take away the mitigation requirements of any development. And I can't imagine that the mitigation requirements for industrial development in any of these SEDs would be anything but difficult. I would expect that they'd be pretty onerous. Would that be a fair characterization?
We could look, we could look at them, but, you know, one thing I would point out is that we're specifically only talking about which designations this, these uses would be allowed in. We're not talking yet about the development standard. So this is just, can they be here? Yes, no. And if yes, there are still development standards, they would be subject to end mitigation as well.
Would these, if, if we did not allow any of this, would a new marina be considered an industrial development then, or would this in the ability to ever open another marina in Thurston County?
The marinas are separate. They're, they're under boating facilities.
Okay.
And I would also point to, yeah, if anyone wants more context, anyone watching, you know, certainly point to the memo as well. There was a memo that was produced last week and is published on the planning commission website with the materials for tonight's meeting. Because this kind of gets in, gets in the weeds pretty quickly, and I apologize if, if, for, if it's overly technical. Try not to.
Question. In the shoreline residential, I get the idea of the landward side. Does, when we're saying no industrial use, does that include tide lands, say, for aquatic, you know, industrial buoy decks or whatever?
So it would not prohibit aquaculture itself, the actual growing of organisms, and, you know, the, and this is actually an item that I was going to touch back on later in the meeting. There had been an outstanding question as to whether, you know, process, to what degree of processing of shellfish, when does it cross that line from aquaculture as in becoming industry? So, but essentially, you know, if you are growing shellfish in the tide lands, and you are rinsing the mud off, and you are tossing out the ones you're not going to harvest, those sorts of things are all considered aquaculture. It's once you start to process them further than that, that it actually becomes industry. And so, you know, when someone is proposing a new aquaculture use, we would get a sense through the application process, all the activities that they are proposing with that use, and if some of them cross that line into industrial, then we would be evaluating it under those standards as well.
So, so planting and harvesting would not be considered an industrial use? That would be aquaculture only?
Right. Yeah, this is not intended, and I, I'm not, I don't have the definition of industry at hand, but I, it's not intended to capture aquaculture, because, well, it's not intended to capture the, you know, rearing of aquatic organisms, because that is specifically handled by the aquaculture rules and everything.
Well, I don't know how anybody else feels on this, but, but I, I kind of don't want to make any decisions on this until after we hear from the public on it. I don't know if there's enough outcry one way or the other to do anything more than go to public hearing with this particular issue, and then if we hear something there, make a decision at that point. But I don't have strong feelings on any of it either way.
And that is an option. Yeah, I mean, I, what you're seeing here on this slide, I could always put in the draft, just in a box, you know, highlight it, put it in a box, and say, this is an area we're looking for public feedback on. You have heard from some members of the public on this specific topic, which is, you know, why it ultimately ended up getting run to ground with the, with ecology. But I could do that. I could package this up in the draft, just as is.
I would be in favor of prohibiting a residential SED and leave the other two, or actually the other one, because rural and urban are combined together for the public to give us comment on.
And what do you, what do you mean they're combined together?
Well, we don't have urban conservancy. We just have rural conservancy, right? Urban one is going away.
We have urban conservancy. So, the, there was a, there is currently in the SMP, there is a said that is just urban, just urban period. That is what's going away, because we only have, I want to say there's maybe 10 or so parcels, 10 or 20 parcels countywide that are even designated that right now, so it's really not being used. The, the urban and rural conservancy is splitting out, those two are splitting out from what we currently call conservancy. And to, if you're, any of our urban growth areas would be, you know, would potentially be urban conservancy if they meet the, the criteria. If you're outside of the urban growth areas, it'd be rural conservancy. But as I mentioned, there are those instances where you've had development occur that is more intense, and therefore, there are some spots that are outside urban growth areas that are considered urban conservancy. But no, the urban conservancy said that will very much be in the, in the, in the draft and going forward. So I, I kind of, I've heard sort of two different things. One, one was to just put, potentially consider, put these things in as an option for public to consider. And two would be to propose to not allow new industrial uses in the shoreline residential, and then leave the other two as options. So make a change and have some options, or just put them all in as options.
Go ahead, Kevin, just jump in.
Thank you. Would this be the appropriate time to raise the public comments, the many public comments about, you know, no net gain designations versus, or no net loss designations versus net gain? And/or measures and metrics related to those factors?
Yeah. Go ahead, if you, yeah, if you wanted to ask a question on that.
Well, I'm just pointing out, we've received a large number of public comments in that direction of keeping the language at, at the very least, that no net loss, if not changing it to net gain, and putting metrics in place so that we can measure whether we're accomplishing net, no net loss. I'm in support of this.
So, I can talk about that a little bit. So we have heard a lot of comments about, you know, or encouraging the county to adopt a net gain standard, and I believe there's even, in the past legislative session, there was some, there were some bills introduced that had that language. I'm not sure if those passed. I don't know that they did. But currently, what's on, what is adopted as state law is a no net loss standard, and that is what the, the county SMP draft includes, is, is measures to, to reach that no net loss. And it's, it's a broad sweep of tools that the county uses in a shoreline master program to achieve that goal. So that includes, you know, going back to the inventory and characterization, where we take a look at all of the conditions of the shorelines around the county and get a baseline for what, what's out there, what level of development, what ecological functions, what opportunities for restoration are out there. And then the shoreline environment designations are another level of measure of that no net loss. Putting the appropriate designation on it, that you can then tailor the rules specifically to protect those functions. The county has, has latitude to develop the development standards and the permitting requirements, you know, that will help to achieve no net loss, and then also shoreline buffers and vegetation standards, mitigation. And all of those pieces are part of that no net loss, and the draft SMP does actually include a section on no net loss monitoring. So once the SMP is adopted, the county, according to the draft, will be monitoring all the permits that are approved along the shoreline, and, you know, various parameters that that go along with those permits relative to the types of development that are approved, and the, that, you know, vegetation changes, shoreline armoring, all those sorts of things. And so that, once we are, once we are preparing an update to the SMP in the future, which I believe is on an eight-year schedule, we can evaluate that. And if we find that there has been loss of ecological function, then the, you know, adaptive management can come in, and the SMP can be adapted to, you know, to reconfigure that or recalibrate to a no net loss standard. So all those pieces are, are in the draft, and they exist in various places. But the specifically, I know one of our commenters talked about the, the, you know, the parameters or the indicators for no net loss, and those are found in chapter 19500 of the SMP draft. And, you know, certainly are ripe for public comment as we continue through this process.
Thank you for that, Andrew. You mentioned these are new, and that we're currently doing the first review of the SMP. It's, obviously, we, we come upon this way past the eight-year mark. I think it's more the 25-plus year mark or so. So are you saying that the metrics would not be revisited for eight more years, and if it took 25 years to get to it, they wouldn't be revisited for 25 years?
I'd have to look at exactly when our next comprehensive update is going to be due. It was certainly due some time ago. And once, yeah, and then, you know, currently jurisdictions are doing their periodic updates. And basically, this update that Thurston County is doing is both. It's playing catch-up on this comprehensive update that was due some years ago, and then also including the periodic update elements that are currently due. So I'm not sure.
I guess I would recommend that we not wait eight years. I would suggest maybe four years, we revisit this type of metrics.
And that is potentially something that this draft could include. It could explore that. I mean, that, that will be open for the, that will be up for public comment, and, you know, the planning commission can certainly also request changes in that regard. That is something I could possibly put an option in the draft and just say, you know, draw more attention to that. We're interested in this area. Please provide comment. We could certainly do that.
I, I don't know how other planning commissioners feel about this, but I would support four years.
Just writing some stuff down. Is there anyone else who wants to add a voice to either of those things? If so.
I think four years is too soon. You're not going to know enough by then.
Other planning, any other planning commissioners that would support?
Andrew, could you, could you explain to us real quickly the community or cumulative impact analysis that you guys will be sending to ecology? Is that an annual report?
I don't, so cumulative impacts analysis is a piece of the overall SMP update package that goes to ecology. There was a draft that was produced in 2018, but it's going to be up to, based on the recommendation, whatever the draft recommendation is that, or, excuse me, the final recommendation of this planning commission to the board. We're going to take another look at that cumulative impacts at that time.
Maybe I'm asking the wrong question. What about like the programmatic effects of the effectiveness of the SMP? How often does that get reported to ecology?
I want to say that's going to be every eight years.
Okay.
I could look into that. And then when you say effectiveness, are you speaking about the no net loss monitoring?
Yeah. How often does the no net loss monitoring get oversight from Department of Ecology, if that's through the programmatic analysis, or through a cumulative impact analysis, or how that happens?
I think it's every eight years, but I will check, and that could also, again, that could potentially be something, I'm not aware that that is a specific statute, or if that's something that this draft entertains, and whether there is an ability to make that a shorter timeframe. But I know there could potentially be those concerns, like Commissioner Carmen stated, about how soon you, you see change and can measure change. And also, you know, the amount of bandwidth that we as staff will be able to put on this, time and resources to completing that work.
I guess we don't even know if ecology wants to look at this more often than what that schedule already is.
Yeah, I don't, I'm not sure. But I know every eight years from this point forward, so I, you know, I've seen a recent presentation on sort of the, it's been 50 years since the Shoreline Management Act has been adopted, and where does that time go? But, you know, we're now in this periodic update framework. So there, you know, the, the original act is promulgated in 1971, and then there were a major update in 2019. Original act is promulgated in nineteen seventy-one and then there were a major update in two thousand and three and then in two thousand and ten, there have been sort of. Little updates over time. Uh, and so jurisdictions were directed to complete their comprehensive updates several years ago. And then now we're in this phase of ongoing periodic review. So every eight years, it's jurisdictions are tasked with, um. Making sure that their SMPs include any changes to the wax that have been included in the previous eight years. And that's also the timeframe where we're supposed to be looking at, you know, the known at loss and how effective is this program being?
This is Kevin again. Have an extra question. Uh, Andy, are, are you saying that there's a, now a report on, or maybe it's a few years old on what the. Sort of cumulative impact has been over the last eight plus years?
It's the cumulative impacts of the draft itself. So, you know, what is? Yeah. What are the impacts to the shoreline of, of, you know, the rules that if they were adopted? Uh, and that is from, I believe twenty eighteen was, is the draft that is available on the SMP website. And I could certainly send you a link to that. If you'd like to take a look. Yeah. And so that's, when I talk about the cumulative impacts analysis for the update, you know, that's what I'm referencing. So things that, uh. Changes that are made to the draft either by a planning commission request or because of public input. You know, we're going to have to look at those through a lens of cumulative impacts. And so if, if, uh, the. You know, if there's going to be more impacts allowed to the shoreline than what we're previously contemplated, then we're going to have to, to show how our program as a whole. Is reaching that balance of, uh, maintaining ecological function and having no net loss.
And so that report shows whether over the last eight years, there was no net loss or?
It doesn't do the eight years. It's, it's, um. I think it, I, it's been a while since I've looked at it. So I might have to, um, defer until I have a chance to read that again. But, you know, I would, I, it, it should be looking at the baseline, which was established, um, with the inventory and characterization. But, uh, let me do some digging on that and I will also send that your way.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, in the meantime, I, unless, unless there is a, a. A majority of the planning commission that wants to make a change to the draft now in this area of no net loss, I'm going to. Steer back to the industrial use piece.
I think, I think it would be good to know, Andrew, with what the timing is to report to ecology. Is it eight year? Just confirm.
Sure.
I think it is eight, but let's just confirm it.
Absolutely. Okay, so I, uh, looking back here at the industrial uses piece, um, I, uh, not to. Not to belabor the point, but, um, there's kind of two different options I've seen floated, uh, putting these pieces in here as an option, just saying. Attention public, we would like your feedback on this area specifically, or, or does, uh, the majority of planning commission want me to make changes to the document? And actually go ahead and change permit requirements at this time.
I think that we should, I mean, I, I would be in favor of keeping off, putting all three in as options. Because my concern is we use the word industrial uses, but you gave us two examples. That weren't, that aren't really industrial uses. They're more commercial uses. And so if we're lumping those in together, then there's a lot more to consider than just industrial uses.
And commercial uses are, um, potentially have different allowances than industrial uses. When I'm lumping them in together, it's, it's, uh. Because the, the state criteria and then the county criteria that we've adopted for. Uh, assigning the shoreline environment designations, it does lump those two together for the purposes of saying, if you've already have this development on your shoreline. You could consider an urban conservancy. And there's of course other criteria, but that's, that's one of them. But when it comes to. Um, the rule, the, the permit requirements and where commercial or industrial uses will be allowed. Uh, and what those development standards are going to be for those different uses, those are handled independently in the draft. Um, so I heard Commissioner Nelson, uh, stated a preference for putting this, these, essentially these policy questions. Uh, in the draft as options. Um, is that something the majority of the planning commission would be in favor of?
I'd like to see it. Did we get some public input from it?
Okay, great. I will make that note and we'll do so that, that one, that's easy. I can do that. Okay. All right, great. So moving on. Uh, okay, so net pen and muscle raft aquaculture standards in the draft SMP. You heard a little bit about this during the, the, um, public. Uh, comment section of the meeting. So this is another item for planning commission that came out of past discussions with ecology staff. Uh, the draft shoreline master program contains a section that has specific standards for net pens and rafts. Um, it, it doesn't say what kind of raft, so it actually doesn't even say muscle raft. It just says raft. Um, and the county does not have any net pen operations to staff's knowledge, and we do have some muscle raft operations. So we wanted to explore and just kind of, uh, essentially bring this issue back around the planning commission just to check the box and, and see if there is, uh. You know, a desire to, to change anything in the draft. Um, you know, we, the intent of this update is to make sure that the regulations that are in the SMP are based on local circumstances. As I mentioned, the, the draft, uh, contains standards for net pens of which we have none. It does not contain standards for muscle wraps of which we do have some. So it's kind of reversed there. Um, and so, yeah, that was basically the policy questions before you hear are, should the SMP include additional standards for muscle wraps? That potentially could be based on conditions of operations that are already permitted? And should we modify or remove, um, net pen specific standards based on not having any? So as some context here, oh, go ahead. Okay. Uh, and please, please jump in if you have a question, but a little more context, I know was definitely appreciated. Um, so I went back and looked at some past permit conditions to see what was approved on a previous muscle raft operation to see if some of those conditions. Um, you know, bring this forward for conversation, uh, in terms of potential development standards. And I wanted to provide a caveat that if the planning commission were to, um. Say, we don't want to see any additional standards in the SMP, or we want you to remove what's in there for net pens or something like that. All of the, the standards in the draft that apply to generally to all aquaculture operations. Will indeed apply to net pens and muscle rafts. So, so if those, if those specific standards were taken out of the draft or you don't add anything. There are still rules for those operations and those rules, um, handle a lot of the, the big considerations. Uh, or concerns that, that people have or that regulatory agencies look for, such as where you can site an operation, how you minimize the visual impacts. How you secure the gear and prevent, um, you know, uh, debris wandering offsite. How you make sure that ecological functions are preserved. All those general standards would still apply. This question is specifically about. Uh, specific additional standards for muscle raft operations or net pen operations. And so I, I looked at some permit conditions and to my eye would appear that. For the purposes of this conversation, um, some might be more generally applicable to, to new operations in general. And some might be more case specific because, you know, the, the special use permit that I looked at, um, I believe it was a special use permit. Um, you know, it, it's one case and it was decided by a hearing examiner and then. Went to what was appealed to the board of county commissioners, was appealed to the shoreline hearings board, which then pointed back to the hearing examiner conditions and added a few. So it's very specific to, to a case. And so not necessarily all generally applicable. So now that I've caveated that to death, um, looking at some permit standards, uh, or the permit conditions. Here are some of the example things that could potentially, uh, be considered as general standards for muscle raft operations. Thing, uh, considerations such as arranging the muscle rafts, uh, you know, parallel to the tidal currents. To minimize the area over which the water currents are affected. Uh, requiring that best management practices are, are used to maintain water quality, uh, when you're sighting or, um, harvesting. Those things, um, minimizing disturbance in marine mammals during maintenance and harvest of aquaculture products. Storing the plastic discs associated with muscle raft culture on land and not storing them on the watercraft, uh, or rafts. And installing nets to catch anything that, that falls off. Um, and then not storing nets on the beach, taking measures to prevent marine mammals from, from using the rafts as rookeries where they, you know. Lay out and sun themselves and et cetera, uh, and then keeping the rafts clean, especially of odor causing substances. Some of the, um, permit conditions that could potentially lend themselves to case specific standards should the planning commission. Um, want to look at that would be separating the rafts from each other in order to allow more light to penetrate. And then relocating the rafts within the site every few years to allow for light, equal light penetration and to prevent the buildup of. Organic material under the, under the rafts. To keep the rafts neat and orderly. Uh, this was a big one in the permit condition and, um, you know, specifically said. To provide contact information to property owners who request it to allow them to, um, directly contact the company if they need to, if they have complaints. And that, uh, require the applicant to respond promptly to complaints and take measures to comply with the meat and orderly requirement. And then, um, empowering people to, you know, if they don't believe the applicant is complying, uh, they can request the county or department of ecology take action. Uh, another standard is potentially, you know, submitting a monitoring plan for any specific issues of concern that are identified. During the application review process. Uh, and I also want to point out that, um, you know. Some of these items may already also be required by, by the other state and federal agencies that are, um. That regulate aquaculture. And so we'd want to keep, keep that in mind as well. Um. I did actually, last night, the, the, uh, shellfish protection district advisory committee had its meeting and I am, I'm the staff coordinator for that committee. Uh, so I, I actually brought this to their attention as well. Just, you know, the time was ripe to see what they thought about that. Um, and that's a, a mix of, um, you know, regulatory agencies, shellfish growers, um, shellfish industry, you know, a whole host of people. Attend those committee meetings. Um, and so they asked to be able to review the draft SMP and these permit conditions that I've uncovered from a past operation. So I'll be forwarding that material to them for their review. They didn't have any immediate, you know, conclusive thoughts on, on this. Um, and we also did hear, you know, sort of that concern that I just mentioned, um, that regulations not conflict with things that are already going to be required. By other regulatory agencies and to have more review of that. So that's sort of a whirlwind of this specific issue. And the policy questions, uh, for this one are. Should we be adding additional standards to the SMP for muscle rafts based on operations that have previously been permitted? Uh, and then should we look at potentially modifying or removing standards for net pens because we don't, we don't have that type of aquaculture? So I will pause there.
What species are included and or, uh, o, o, omitted from these standards?
It doesn't have to necessarily be any one species, uh, and that's part of the, part of the general. Um, part of the general requirements of the aquaculture and, you know, any sort of aquaculture, they have to list what species are being included. And then there are rules potentially around if it's something that is native or, uh, non, you know, non-native, if it's never been. Problem, if it's never been grown in Washington state, there's specific things that they need to do. And again, we're not the only agency that is going to be. Looking at this sort of thing. So this is more about the. Specifically, this is about the, you know, the, the type of culture is out away from shore typically. So net pens are, you know, you often see them offshore and they're kind of like a floating island, right? And the same could be said for the muscle wraps versus tideland aquaculture where you have things grown directly in the substrate, uh, along the shoreline. Or, you know, something like flip bag aquaculture where you have oysters, you know, in a bag that, that flips over as the tide changes back and forth.
Andy, I, I had never heard of a special use permit before. I understand a substantial development permit and a conditional use permit. But why did that, are the current muscle raft operation need a special use permit? And what is that?
I, I may have misspoke. It may not have been a special use permit in this case. Um, but, uh, when it comes to the zoning code. So, uh, uses are potentially, um, you know, you have your, your, your traditional allowed uses in a, in a specific zone. And then you have what they call special uses, uh, where you might need a special use permit that it's conditionally allowed. Uh, it, it has to meet, you know, additional standards perhaps. So a good example would be, you know, you have a residential zone and so, and there might be limited commercial. Uses that would be allowed with a special use permit. Um, I don't know that this, in this case, there was a special use permit. I'd have to, I'd have to go back and look. So I might have misspoke on that, but there absolutely were shoreline permits that were required from, from Thurston County. And then there were all those other agencies that needed to review it as well.
I, I guess what I'm wondering is from the county standpoint, did that muscle raft have to go through? Muscle raft operation permitting have to go through, uh, a hearings examiner automatically? So like a conditional use permit or was it, under current law, was it, uh, a substantial development permit before they could start that operation?
Yeah, I, um, I would have to go back and look. I'm not sure.
I mean, I'm not really sure how to, how to do this, but the whole idea of, um, something like a muscle raft, if it had to, obviously. You know, the corps is involved and ecology is involved and probably DNR. And there's a million other people that are, or a million other agencies that are involved in this. Uh, but if we're looking for a local oversight on some of these kinds of things, um, it, it does not hurt my feelings if, uh. That's something that's done in front of a hearing examiner instead of a, uh.
Yeah. And so maybe real quickly while we're talking here, maybe I can find, um. Because to my memory, uh, you know, the planning commission went through and part of, part of what's in this next or this, this newest version of the draft. Uh, that came before you this week, uh, you all, you had some guidance on permit standards and changing some things. Perhaps it required a conditional permit before additional use permit and you changed it to, uh, SDP or maybe it was administrative, you know, all those sorts of things happened. I'm looking now at, uh, aquaculture. I don't, you, you guys did not, uh, propose any changes to that. So as currently in the draft. Um, you know, gooey duck aquaculture requires a conditional use permit and that is by state law. Uh, all other aquaculture currently requires a substantial development permit. But as, as this draft is written, substantial development permit would require a hearing examiner review. Uh, it's only if it's administrative that it would be a staff review. So currently, or excuse me, not currently, but if this draft were to be adopted as it currently, uh, is written. Those uses would require hearing examiner approval because they are substantial development permits.
I guess my thought on this is that each time we've gotten to this section in the document. Um, the result has been you need, that Andy, you needed to get more information from ecology. So we didn't discuss it in detail. And we really haven't had consumer public input on it. I, I think we ought to. My thought is put this information in the draft and ask for public comment on it.
And I think that's a perfectly appropriate option. Um, yeah. And I could, um, even on this one, you know, we have the memo. I have the memo that, that, uh, talks about this and could potentially boil that down or be able to provide some good context for people to, to. Read it and, 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 you know, grasp, we're asking for and provide some good feedback. So is that something that, uh?
Yeah, I like that idea a lot.
Okay.
For instance, tonight when Deanie Taylor spoke, I couldn't really hear her. Or I couldn't follow what she was saying. So, I mean, I'd like to see hers, her, um, information in writing. So, but. That's the first that we've had any public testimony on this kind of thing.
It's the first time on this specific issue because, yeah, this is one that, um, was marked in the draft as, you know, need to work with ecology. And, and I was finally able to, to get in some research on that and come back and, and this is the conversation we're having. You're right. So it is the first time that we have addressed this specific issue. Uh, well, based on what I'm hearing from folks, uh, I'm happy to include it in the draft as in, as a policy question. And so we won't necessarily. We won't make the changes now, but we will, um, you know, link to this information and link to the, the memo and these research that I've done so far. Uh, and give people that opportunity to comment.
Andrew, I have a, just a little thought or question. In your memo that I have in front of me. It says ecology is currently accepting public comments on draft net pen guidance. And the draft contains additional standards for net pens. Is it prudent for us to wait to see what they do? So we're not, we're either. we're either in line with them or not.
So right now.
I don't know their timeline.
Yeah. And I, it's going to be beyond, yeah, well, I don't want to say it's beyond the scope of this timeline for this project, but it is currently in flux, right? The draft SMP, it, the first thing it says under this section for net pens is that essentially, you know, we have, it points back to the state's rules, right? Which are currently under development, but you know, the draft SMP is written in such a way that once the state adopts those rules, you know, we're going to have, we're going to, we, you know, make sure that what we permit is in line with what the state will permit. There are then some specific standards that come below that, that talk about, you know, the type of anchor you would use for a net pen and how far offshore it needs to be. And those are the sorts of things that ecology had questions about. You know, looking for context of our local environment and where those rules came from, because we don't have those operations, uh, to point to. So I, I think that, that it certainly, there's at least one standard in there that, that we could leave to point to the state's guidance. And there are other pieces in there that absolutely could consider, you know, taking out. I think that's, that's part of this question. Should they be there at all?
Well, I, I still like Doug's idea of taking this to the, uh, open house and get more information from the public, even if I believe that net pens are not going to survive this process on the state level. So it might be moot. Forward with it to, to open house would be a good idea.
And the other point I would make specifically for net pens is, uh, the draft also states that no non-native species would be allowed until such guidance is published from the state on, on finfish aquaculture. And everybody knows why, uh, or a lot of us will remember why things like that got in the draft based on an incident a couple of years ago. Okay. Well, uh, I, I think that's the guidance from you all is to go ahead and, um, put these things or link to this information and I will go ahead and do so. All right. So moving on to our third item. Fences in the shoreline master program. Let me find my notes. So the draft shoreline master program is currently silent about the concept of property line fencing. In the draft SMP, uh, fencing is allowed to, to mark off the boundaries of recreational development. And fences at, at the state level are considered to be a residential appurtenance. However, um, the, the section of the SMP that talks about uses that are allowed in shoreline buffers, uh, that nineteen four hundred one twenty D is actually silent about whether a property fence could extend into the buffer. Uh, you know, to, to mark off property lines. And, uh, you know, we know that this is just one of those things that we get, we'll get phone calls for, and people will say, I, you know, I, I have a critical area or a shoreline and I wanted to put in a fence, what are the rules? And planners will want to know the same thing. And so, uh, this issue was brought to my attention. And so I'm approaching it with planning commission and trying to see what sort of standards we might want to introduce into the draft for clarity for future users and for landowners.
Would, would this fencing only be for property lines, but it wouldn't be, I mean, I could see where farmers would be pretty upset if all of a sudden you told them they couldn't use fencing. Cause they keep their cows corralled.
Right. Well, remember the, the draft or the SMP does not regulate existing and ongoing agriculture. It don't, you know, the typical agriculture, I don't believe. So I don't know that that would be affected, um, but it's something to, that we can make sure of. So when I'm talking about this, I'm specifically talking about, um, property line fencing and uses that are allowed in, in, in the buffers. So we could look at, I could go back and double check and make sure that, you know, it wouldn't affect agriculture, but specifically what's missing is, you know, what, what, what the typical property owner wants to know they can do in their buffer, uh, and the section of the draft that talks about that, those allowances does not include fences.
I, I personally would like to see property line fencing re- remain an option for landowners, for property owners.
Okay. Well, let, let's get there. Um, so one piece to keep in mind. Again, the shoreline master program is adopting the critical area standards for critical areas that are also within SMP jurisdiction. So if you're in SMP jurisdiction and you also have critical areas, say a steep slope or a wetland, or, uh, you know, habitat for a listed species, those standards for the critical areas ordinance are going to be included. And generally speaking, property line fencing would not be allowed, uh, in a general sense. It would only be allowed if it's going to protect critical area function as determined by the, you know, by the approval authority, by the planner, by the director during that permanent review. So really what, what we're talking about is for any areas that are not affected by the critical area standards, how would we address that property line fencing in shoreline buffers? And some policy questions or, or thoughts here are, should fences be allowed to go all the way down to the ordinary high watermark? Fences are currently in the SMP, they are currently allowed in the buffer, but there is a twenty foot strip from the ordinary high landward, a twenty foot area that is essentially no, no structures with very limited exceptions. Fences are not one of those. So the interpretation that's been made by staff is that currently fences can only go to twenty feet to the ordinary high and then they stop. The other question would be, should fences in this section in the buffer, should it be limited to residential development or should it be allowed to areas or to uses beyond that? And Commissioner Casino, you touched on that just a moment ago. And then, um, should there be any height limits on those fences or, uh, standards around the type of materials that would be used so that views would be protected? So picture a, um, you know, a six foot wooden, solid wooden fence versus a four foot chain link fence or something like that, or split rail. That's sort of the consideration there. So there I will pause and see what the planning commission thinks. I know, uh, Commissioner Casino has come on and said, allow property line fencing. And, um, so I'll open it up to the planning commissioners.
Are we required to include this COA, CAO standards?
We are required, so critical area protections within shoreline master program. I mean, yeah, we are required to protect critical areas. So the purpose or the, the method of doing so is to take the critical area standards that are currently being implemented and apply them, you know, once the SMP is done. So, so keep in mind that, you know, someone who wants to come in today and wants, has the same question about a fence, uh, and they have both shoreline and they have a wetland under the CAO, they are subject to both standards. And if one is more restrictive than the other, that is what will, will, what will, um, carry the day. And so that is what will happen also under the, under the draft, you know, those rules are, they apply today, they will continue to apply once the SMP update is adopted.
Well, they apply today simply because the, the, we haven't done, completed the SMP. But once we've completed the SMP, the CAO says the SMP has has precedence.
Correct. But the WACS also say that, uh, we must provide the same level of protection at the CAO, for critical areas that the CAO is providing. And so the proposal is to, you know, there's, there's not a whole lot in the critical areas ordinance that is being excluded. You know, in this update, it's largely, it's, it's the permitting and the administrative pieces which the SMP solely controls and that, that's kind of black and white. In the WACS, all the development standards for critical areas, you know, they still apply and are proposed to be incorporated.
Andrew, a question. Can a property owner who has livestock, uh, fence his property down to the river, lake or sound?
I, I would have to look at what our agricultural rules allow, because I think that's going to fall under, under agriculture and not necessarily the SMP. But I know, uh, yeah, I'm not sure if that's what was, you know, behind the rules in the critical areas ordinance that say, if it's going to actually protect the functions of the critical area of buffer, you know, go ahead and fence that off. So I could, I could look into that.
Thank you.
And again, you know, I, whatever, whichever way folks land on, um, the SMP draft, you know, I just wanted to be clear, one way or the other, whether it's allowed, whether it's not allowed, and there's development standards surrounding it, you know, it's just an unanswered question. I, I've, I've been approached by folks who said, what does the update say? Am I going to be allowed to fence my property line? And, and it is completely silent on, on that. So just being able to provide the context or the guidance is, is the goal of this question.
Ju- just to give another example, uh, my neighbor put up a fence between his place and my place for the sole purpose of keeping his dog contained. And I was actually grateful for his fence. So I would like to see the option for fences to continue. I don't have a fence on the other side of my house, but those people don't have a dog.
And so, uh, Commissioner Casino, with that, so looking at, um, these questions here, would your proposal go down to the ordinary high?
Yeah, yeah, I would have, have, I would allow fencing or leave the SMP silent on fencing if it's allowed elsewhere.
Okay. And I actually, now that I see that I wrote this, um, it should be ordinary high or actually, I'm not sure that though they would be allowed inside of a floodplain. Um, so we'll have to, I might have to look at that a little closer. Um, but essentially, I guess your proposal would be allow it, allow it to the extent that it is not prohibited by some other statute. Okay. Uh, what if other folks think about that? Let me see, Doug is nodding.
I don't, I don't disagree with that.
You don't disagree? You do not disagree? Okay. Okay.
Andrew, what, or Eric, maybe this is a question for you. What about like height limits and those types of things? Has it affected your view? With, is that, I get the dog part, but are you comfortable with?
No development standards? I think we already have development standards for other appurtenances, don't we, that we could apply to fences?
Not as they relate to view of protection. That is something the planning commission, I believe, has removed from the draft.
Okay, then I'm, I'm still good with, with, uh, leaving it, leaving it permissive and open.
The code, the code limits it to six feet.
Right.
I, if your neighbor was a marina or a park, a six foot fence is probably a pretty nice thing.
If you're a little lower than, than the neighbor and they put up a six foot fence, then is it a good thing?
Yeah.
Well, I don't think you own a view. I, the whole concept of, of views and who owns them is a little bit nebulous for me. I don't think that.
That's true.
Just because you live on the water, you own the whole view of everything. Uh, and I think that we should allow property owners to do what they want with their property.
And so would that, uh, that said, would that proposal then include more than just residential uses? I'm trying to make sure I don't come back and ask these questions again. Because that section of the draft is uses allowed in buffers. It's not just residential development. So you know, if we're, let's see, okay. Cause in this instance, it sounds like it's, the guidance is not to, um, uh, not to just include things as option for public hearing. It's to actually go ahead and make this a change to the, to the draft. So I want to make sure that I'm capturing that correctly. Okay. Well, I will, um, I will make it general. Uh, and again, we are, we are headed into public hearing, uh, and it is ripe for comment. And then on the other side, it is ripe for, for more comment before planning commission ultimately makes a recommendation. So I will go general, uh, and then we will, we can see what that precipitates. See Jennifer turned on her camera. No? Okay.
So staff has requested motion to move to set a public hearing on the Thurston County SMP comprehensive and periodic updates for September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-one at seven PM. Is that something you all are comfortable with or?
Jim, we're not, I'm not, I'm sorry, I'm not quite.
Okay, I thought you were done. Sorry.
Oh, no, I'm done with, we are now done with one of the, the four broad areas before we get to, to that topic. Um, but hopefully the others will go a little bit quicker and we can, we can get there. I also, I'm watching the clock and if, um, if I need to cut off, uh, the, one of the items, I've got one that we can kind of lose.
I apologize, Andrew.
That's okay. No worries. Um, okay. So I am going to, uh, move on. And we are going to talk about the, um, the virtual open house postcard notification. So the planning commission has asked for an opportunity to review the postcard. And so here we are, we're bringing it back. Uh, the final product that we have produced reflects the the input that the planning commission provided at the November eighteenth, two thousand twenty meeting. And then we brought that language back again at the December second meeting. And from what we heard from folks, they liked it. And so the language today reflects what was last reviewed by the planning commission on December second. To briefly touch on the, the categories of landowners that will receive this direct mailing is, uh, people who are essentially most affected by the SMP update. So properties where their shoreline environment designation is proposed to change to something that is more protective. Properties where buffers are proposed to increase, uh, or properties that are coming into SMP jurisdiction for the first time. So this is the direct mailing to those folks who are most affected. Uh, in addition to that outreach, we have our general suite of outreach measures, which includes updating on our website and we've got our, you know, online mailing list that we do posting notification at the county. Um, and all those other things that we, that we do. And also the, the open house, the open house itself is, is a broad public measure and will be advertised in the newspaper and our website and et cetera. It's what I'll be talking about with all my friends. Uh, so I will go ahead and here we go. Here's the actual postcard itself. I do apologize. I, I realize I didn't, uh, exclude the actual background of this slide. So it doesn't have the the bottom piece where you see shoreline master program at Thurston SMP.org and the logo in the upper right hand corner of your screen. That's not part of the postcard. It's, it's the image here of the lake with the caption underneath. And then that's the front. And then here is the back, which includes the language, uh, that was previously reviewed by planning commission. I will go ahead and read it off for anyone who is listening on the phone or just for the record. Uh, so the postcard text states, Thurston County is updating its shoreline master program and shoreline rules and designations are proposed to change. You are receiving this postcard because your property will be directly affected by these changes. Your future plans to use or develop your property could be affected. We want to hear from you. Please join us for a virtual open house where you can see how these changes may affect your property, weigh in on the changes and get your questions answered by planning staff. And then it says when, August second to August thirtieth, two thousand twenty-one. And we're, I actually, we need to modify that. Uh, and then the where it's got the, a URL which is currently not live. So if anyone's looking at that link and tries to go there, it's, it's not up yet, but once we launch, that's the address that people will be able to access. So I will pause there and, uh, let you guys, uh, weigh in.
Andrew, I have a question. This is, does the notification go to all the property owners whose property is a change in designation or just those who are adversely affected?
It's going to anyone whose designation is changing to something that's more protective. So.
How about those who are less protected? Or, or are there any?
Only if they're, only if the buffers are changing. And the only area I think that is occurring would be on lakes. Because when we updated the critical areas ordinance in two thousand twelve, we specifically did not update buffers related to lakes. So the shoreline buffer for a lake is currently only fifty to one hundred feet. So if you are going from shoreline residential to conservancy or from conserver, or no, I'm sorry, I have that backwards. If you're going from conservancy to shoreline residential or from natural to conservancy, you wouldn't necessarily get a postcard unless your buffer is, is increasing, you know, because of that.
And also those, if those properties are being restricted less, why are we not sending them a notification?
Because the, the genesis of this outreach project was to provide a direct notification to people who are the most affected. We do not have the budget for a countywide notice of direct postcard notice. And so, you know, we are trying to reach the people who are going to see the most or could see the most significant effects of this update. And that's the people whose designations are changing to something that is more protective. So they're going from shoreline residential to say conservancy, you know, rural conservancy. Uh, or it's people who are coming into SMP jurisdiction for the first time. There has been a lot of changes to our data layers over the years and we have a better sense of where, you know, flood plains and wetlands are. And those things are, um, potentially bringing property into shoreline jurisdiction for the first time. And we want to make sure people know that because while they may be regulated currently under the critical area rules, with the SMP update, they are going to potentially have shoreline permits, uh, needed for projects on their property. And that is something new and it's something we wanted people to know about.
I, I agree with that. I just wonder why we would not notify those people whose restrictions have been lessened.
So remember, can I, can people hear me? I don't, I can't see myself on my little screen. Um, so this is one, the direct postcard mailing is one of multiple outreach efforts, and we've described this to the planning commission uh, multiple times and to the Board of County Commissioners. Um, and so, you know, especially with the language that was chosen for this postcard, we're really targeting with the direct mailing of the postcard, those folks who have, will be impacted the most. Their buffer is changing, they're new to the S and P, they're, they're seeing some major change, um, to how they can use their property. That is the dividing line, and then the rest of the notifications, as Andy has described multiple times, will be done through a variety of other channels. Um, it's in the county's interest to notify people using multiple methods. We want to get robust public participation. Um, but it's not in the current scope of worker budget to, to mail a postcard to everyone who may have shoreline property, period. Um, and I also want to say, you know, I really appreciate the planning commission's uh, interest in making sure there's good public notification happening. Um, I know the board's interested in that too. Staff has gone over our public participation plan and open house design and plan um, with the board, um, and we've been providing this information to the planning commission as requested. Um, but, you know, I want to be really clear that, you know, CPED, Community Planning Economic Development Department feels that this public outreach work is staff work. It, it isn't, the, the planning commission has many important policy advisory roles. It, it isn't the role of the planning commission to approve public outreach elements. Um, we're happy to answer questions about them, and we've done so. We've spelled out the process, and I think it's time to just, you know, we're gonna move forward with this public outreach. Um, as we've described, uh, once this public hearing is set, so we can have the longest time possible and be able to do the outreach in the most ways possible. Um, you know, within budget and reason to get people engaged, and that's our mission, so. Uh, and that's why, you know, you've had sixty, not you, because you haven't been here probably the whole time, but the planning commission has had sixty meetings now where S and P has been on the agenda, so. You know, we've, you've done that critical work to set up the draft to be ready, and we're ready, uh, as staff to do the public outreach. We have a lot of things teed up. Um, we're still do it, working through applying this criteria to a parcel map. We don't have that for the planning commission to look at that parcel map of who's getting the postcard uh, ready tonight. Um, but nothing is hidden here. Uh, it's the county's role and staff's role to do the public outreach uh, work, um, and we'd like to just move forward with that.
I think that this postcard should say something to the effect that if you would disagree with these changes, now is the time for you to take action. Then we want to hear from you, da-da-da-da-da. Because the problem is, as we brought up before, once we establish the characterization of the property, it will be very difficult and costly for the consumer to come back and complain later. They can complain now and, and perhaps get us to change the characterization for their property fairly easily, if, as long as we agree. But later on, when they have to go through the full process, it's not. So we should say that in here.
But we're also doing outreach to people who may agree with the changes. It's not just for people who may disagree. It's an opportunity for everyone um, who is affected by these changes, and we hear from people all the time that they want more environmental protection, and they want, we've heard from people tonight. Um, so it's not just about disagreement, it's about looking at the whole package of changes, and that's why it says in bold type, you know, we want to hear from you on these changes. You are being affected, and I think to set it up to assume that there's disagreement is I, I don't feel, I feel like this has been asked and answered by the planning commission at last November and December. We're ready to roll with this postcard. We have to send it to the printers and get it out. And to revisit this at this point is, I, I don't think there's an appetite for that in CPED.
Well, there is with me, this.
I hear you.
sumer is very important to, and when you, when it's difficult for them to see how they're being impacted, but we, if we don't tell them, we've already, we tell them here that your future plans to use, develop your property could be affected, and, but now is the time for you to act if you disagree with this, because it's costly. And, and all we do is raise the cost to the consumer and cause inflation. And if we can prevent that by getting it taken care of in the front end, rather than the back end, we should make that effort for the, for the, for the voting public. And you're right, some people do agree with it. Well, those probably are not the people that we're sending this card to.
I'm not going to assume.
Yeah, well, and they can also, you can say whether you, whether you agree with them or disagree, now is the time to, to speak.
I mean, I think it, frankly, I think it does say that. I mean, it says, we want to hear from you, you can weigh in on the changes. Um, and this is, and this is the language that was previously, um, I don't want to say approved, but it was previously not objected to by the planning commission. We made changes, and what meaning based on feedback, made it more direct. This was the result of that work. Um, and, you know, really, it hasn't, it has not been changed since that. We took the planning commission's recommendations at that time, and this is the product that we are putting forward.
We gave you recommendations and asked to see the card. Now you're telling us that it's too late for us to comment. That's.
You gave, you gave your recommendations, and then we showed you the postcard.
Yeah, and now it's too late to make changes on on the impact of it.
But I just.
I disagree with, with bringing this in at the end and not bringing it in sooner.
We brought it in last November and December. Can I please remind all planning commissioners that we had this discussion last November and December? And I understand your interest in making this in the exact vision that you want it to make it, and that's what we did here, based on input we received previously. I think this, we've, we've spent a lot of time talking about this, and I think the purview of the planning commission is on the policy, which you've done an amazing job on spending time, looking at all of the words and all of the drafts uh, and providing that guidance, and you provided final guidance tonight on major policy issues. So I think with that, we're ready to move forward with outreach.
This is, um, Raul, I would like to say a couple of things here. Thank you, Jennifer. You've been pretty eloquent in your presentation. However, uh, so was Andrew. Andrew stated very clearly that this postcard is gonna go to the people that are gonna be most impacted by this. He also mentioned three specific changes that would impact most of these people. One of those things didn't mention the new natural, which also will impact these people, and I'm hoping this postcard would also go to those folks. With that in mind, I would li- I would say that it is a misleading postcard in one little penny word. Your property could be affected. No, your property, property will be affected. And that should be changed, because otherwise, it's actually deceitful. Number two, a point of order. We have been asking since November to see the overlay that has still to be seen. We've been asking not quite that long to see the postcard several times. And now, at the very last minute, is the last time we see it, and now we're being kind of buffaloed into not uh, into accepting the, the way it is. Also, the job of the planning commission is to represent a good cross-section of the people in the county and to prevent you folks from having a very hostile hearing full of misinformed people, and we're trying to prevent that. Now, if what you're trying to do is send a postcard that would actually misinform people, and they would have grounds to actually want to lie to purchase and come after you, go for it. But I think my recommendation would be actually very clear, state the four point, four points that are gonna be significantly impacted and say you will be affected, and it will be simple change. Why is it so hard to do that? I used to be a graphics designer. We'll take out a couple of clicks and I can change the postcard. My point, and now it's a public record.
So just to clarify, um, the postcard states that your property will be affected. It states that future plans to use or develop property could be affected, and that was a deliberate change.
Be mine. It will be affected. Andrew, you know what? As well as I do, and so is everybody in this board.
That depends on who owns the property and what plans they have for development. Um, that is, that is subjective. It is objective that the property will be affected based on the changes that are happening with the map. But it, you know, it really depends on the uses that are proposed on a property and where they're proposed, and even if they are ever proposed in the future.
Then in that particular case, then enumerate the three things you mentioned earlier on that will be that folks are impacted, and also those properties that are gonna be under the classification of new natural. And send the postcard to those as well. That's only fair, and that's only ethical.
So, so you're saying that the, the property actually could be adversely affected?
Absolutely.
So the whole purpose of those going, and we go back, um, to these three broad categories, right? So properties where Seds are proposed to become more protective, that is more protective of the environment, and so out of respect for, you know, wanting to make sure people are notified that there are going to be additional regulations, uh, that's, that's why they are included.
If you're going, if you're going from shoreline residential to natural, you would absolutely get the postcard, for example.
Absolutely, and properties where buffers are proposed to increase, that's a no-brainer. We want to make sure people know that. And again, properties that are coming into S and P jurisdiction for the first time. If you have a wetland on your property, you are already aware that there are rules surrounding, and those rules may currently only exist in the critical areas ordinance. But the point of this notification is that those could potentially be coming into S and P jurisdiction, and we want people to know that, because it's an entirely different permitting process, and that is gonna be new for folks, and we want them to be aware.
That is one of the reasons that, why we wanted to see the overlay map, because there are gonna be many different properties imp- impacted by several different things, and not, the postcard shouldn't go as a blanket to every impacted group. Maybe we can tailor it to the specific ones and have a hearing manageable for those particular people instead of having a one catch-all, just to put a practicality of, uh, getting it out of our system. I am trying to prevent this from going south on you guys, and it seems like apparently you folks have not experienced the terrible hearings we've had in the past in this county. It's not a good picture.
So I was a planning commissioner when we had the critical areas ordinance update hearing, so I've been part of some hearings. Um, uh, we want to be fact-based and, and, and I'm gonna say two things, and then I'm gonna stop and turn it over to the chair to maybe decide whether we're ready to move forward to set this thing, but, um, uh, all the information we're putting out is fact-based. It relates directly back to the draft. There's nothing deceitful, there's nothing, uh, hidden, there's no attempt to, um, uh, set people up, uh, in one way or the other with their opinion. Um, and it will be a well-attended and probably highly-charged public hearing. That is the nature of shoreline master program updates, which is why, to manage for that, we're doing all we can to run the longest outreach period we can, and we have interactive mapping that people can look at. We have multiple fact sheets. We've gone over these elements before. Um, I think at this point, it's just, you know, we're taking your input under advisement. We appreciate that input from the planning commission, but staff is gonna move forward with the public outreach program, um, as the department sees fit to do so. I guess that was one thing.
And Jennifer, just to jump on, um, you mentioned after that piece, you were gonna point back to the chair. I, I was going to do a very brief, just kind of overview of the pieces of that makeup, that draft, and, and then ask for that conversation on the hearing, if, if that is okay. Okay. All right, so, um, staff have produced, uh, new versions of draft documents for the planning commission. Um, so the main one, uh, we have the, the S and P main draft that we've kind of been going through over the last several meetings, which is not a whole new draft. Um, you know, it is, it is a, uh, it's something that I have been updating, um, as we have, as planning commission has been providing input, and so what you'll see in there are uh, the past, the results of the, you know, past meetings and things that you have asked for. Um, so the plan is to take any, you know, the new guidance that you provided tonight and go ahead and produce a final, final public hearing draft. Uh, that draft will be published online. It will be available for review in the Building Development Center. Um, hard copies of that final draft will be available to the planning commission members upon request. Please email me, and I will be happy to arrange for a, a written copy, or excuse me, a hard copy of that. The reason we're doing it that way is because all told, all these things are it's over four hundred pages of paper, and so rather than put nine copies of that in the mail, just let me know if you want a copy and we'll provide one. Uh, and then we will also be publishing along with the version that we're all know and love with the, all the colors in it, uh, different rounds of edits. We'll have a clean copy version that people can, can use. And that would be the main thing we want to refer to is, here's a clean copy version of the, the, you know, the draft to date, and then, you know, if anyone wants to know the history, uh, or be able to point to changes that have been made over time in the process, we will have that other version available that folks are familiar with, with all the different, um, color text. So again, as I mentioned, uh, the main S and P draft document is sort of the flagship of the public hearing draft materials. It's, it's chapters one hundred through seven hundred, and then it's also the three appendices you all have looked at before. It's the mitigation options, the restoration plan, and the channel migration zone maps. Uh, we also have an updated shoreline environment designations map, which is appendix A of the S and P, and appendix E, which is the critical area regulations that are incorporated by reference. Uh, and that's all those things I talked about. It's the development standards, uh, and it, it, it is, what it is not is the permitting and the administrative pieces of the C A O, because as we've discussed, that's all being handled by the S and P. We've also, uh, gone ahead and produced a supplement to the inventory and characterization, which notes amendments to the original document since that one was published. So the, the supplement, uh, revises, it includes the revised reach breaks that the planning commission, uh, has, has requested via motion, and also has some revised reach breaks based on changes that have occurred, uh, in our jurisdictions over time. So as as cities annex land, you know, we move the reach break points back out to where the unincorporated county takes over. Uh, it also includes additions or removals to S and P jurisdiction based on more recent analysis of the data layers of our water bodies, of our wetlands and our floodplains. Um, and it also makes notes of, um, uh, area, you know, it documents those as well. It documents the data changes that have occurred in that report. The final product is a, uh, shoreline environment designation report supplement, which, again, it, uh, notes the amendments to the said report since the original one was published. It's got the motions planning commission made related to Lake Lawrence and Offutt Lake. Uh, it proposes, uh, changing the shoreline environment designations for mining lakes in the county, because we no longer are proposing a mining uh, said. It's, it's now proposed to be rural conservancy for those, and then there are proposed sets for two new lakes that are coming into S and P jurisdiction um, since the two thousand thirteen work was done. So those are the updated pieces that were sent to planning commission. Um, and then also I would just mention that the original inventory and characterization and the shoreline environment designations report, of course, are part of this whole package and are ripe for public review and comment as well. So all these pieces are, um, linked on our website, and, you know, between now and, um, the next meeting, I will update that, to update those materials and get them front-facing and ready for, for, uh, what will be very robust public comment. So I'll stop there, uh, and see if there are any questions on these pieces. Otherwise, um, that would conclude, um, this portion of the shoreline master program work session for this evening. We'll move into the hearing piece.
And Andrew, could you, did, did you say that the, um, clean copy is going to be uh, available to us, and then the, uh, edit version is going to be online? Is that the way you're gonna do it?
They're both gonna be online, uh, and they are both available to planning commission. So, you know, I didn't just want to by default print it all and send it to you guys, but if you want a copy of those things, please write me, please email me, let me know. I'm happy to produce those. Uh, we will put them online. There will be a version available in the Building Development Center for people to review, and those are available to the public for, uh, if they want us to print them a copy, we can do so at, at cost. I'm not exactly sure what that is, but we can do that.
Thank you.
Okay, so let's move on. Um, postcard issue is just, I think.
Postcard issue is just, I think you can sell, I was just mentioning that they are going to do the outreach and we're just hoping that they, you know, we will reach the people that need to be reached and they will, um, come back and comment as they need to. So that is kind of where we are in that. So let's move forward. Staff has recommended that we move to set a public hearing on the Thurston County S and P comprehensive and periodic updates for September 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Is there anybody that would like to make that motion?
Before we get there, can we touch base on the open house? It, has it been decided that we are not going to have an in-person open house at all?
The open house will be entirely virtual. Uh, however, the public hearing will have both a virtual and a live component. So we are anticipating having, uh, and Jennifer, please correct me if I'm misstating this, but, uh, we are planning to have the planning commission in room 280, which is the commission, board of county commissioners chambers. Uh, that room would support that, that sort of hybrid approach and the 152 would, would not. It's just not quite as technically, um, advanced. Uh, so, you know, planning commissioners will be in that room, staff will be in that room, and, uh, the public is, will have the ability to come and physically be present. Uh, and they can also, uh, make testimony over, over the Zoom, which we've all been doing since, you know, March of last year.
So this September 15th would be hybrid version?
Correct. That's what we are currently anticipating.
The open house itself will be online. There are multiple components to the open house. But staff is also making themselves available to do, you know, if there's a lakes management district who wants to, have a Zoom or, you know, given the circumstances with what's going on with COVID, I don't know about in person. But there will be opportunities to do specific outreach to specific groups, um, by request. Um, and that will be, uh, they can make that request, uh, through our website interface, um, through the open house. If I'm not misspeaking, Andy, because you may know more about that than me.
That's correct. Yeah, that's correct. One of our, one of our outreach points is, you know, that staff are available for custom, customized presentations for specific groups if they're interested in seeing that. Uh, and the other thing I would mention is that while we are not planning to have a physical in-person open house, uh, one of the logistical considerations for the public hearing is that there will be a lot of people who show up and it undoubtedly, there will be more people than can fit into 80. They're planning for having room 152 open for kind of overflow seating. And that provides us the opportunity to have materials down there. We can print post, uh, posters and fact sheets and have copies of the draft down there available for people. So there will be that during the public hearing. And there will also be staff that are kind of roving about as that's going on.
Would, would that be something like, we could have, um, maybe the doors open an hour before the public hearing?
Yeah, that's a great, I, I think that's a great idea, Eric. And I think that's what we've been talking about too. We're going to be working through logistics of that actual, uh, public hearing date, and that will be part of what's advertised for the official advertising of that public hearing. Uh, doors open at six, public hearing testimony starts at seven. Um, come early to review materials. And then, uh, I think the way we'll probably end up doing it is calling, uh, small batches of folks upstairs to provide that testimony as well as whoever's tuning in on the, on the Zoom, um, so that we don't overload, um, 280, which isn't a lot of space. Um, but 152 can be where people are waiting and signing in and interacting with staff before they come up and provide their testimony.
Can you get us parking in the building?
Parking in, in the building?
Yeah, down in the park, regular parking, you know, because I don't want to get there, you know, five o'clock to get a seat, a place to park so I can sit around and wait for an hour and a half to have a meeting.
Okay. So you're asking for maybe some reserved planning commission parking. We might be able to work something out, cordon off a spot, put some cones in there. Well, I'll look, I'll look at, I'll look for that from the facilities, folks. See what we can do.
Okay. Is there anybody willing to move this motion forward?
I, I'm not ready to, to do this until like, at least the, uh, 18th of August. I need to see a copy of it.
Well, the public hearing is, is, we're requesting September 15th.
I know. Well, I'm, I'm, I'm not willing to make a motion or vote on a motion for a public hearing until I've had a chance to look at the document. Cause we haven't, we've got piecemeal and we're going to maybe do this and maybe do that. And, you know, I need to, I need the time to read through it, to be prepared for the public testimony and for the, the stuff that people are going to be asking. So I'd be willing to, for me, entertaining a motion on the 18th, or meeting on the 18th for a public hearing sometime in the future, I'd be willing to do, but other than that, I would vote no, so.
So I'm not hearing anybody ready to move this motion, Jennifer. So what's next?
I, I would just want specific guidance from the planning commission on what you need to feel ready to set a public hearing to give us enough time to run a several week, four to six week is the plan, uh, open house and public outreach. Um, I think that, you know, you, you are going to see, we've done, we've done this for a lot of other public hearings at the planning commission where on the night you're setting the public hearing, you've had final deliberations. You said staff, go make these final changes. Let's set the public hearing based on what we're going to see in that final draft. And I think that's where we are right now. If we wait, um, to see a final draft of all these changes, um, you know, that could be, it'll shave at least probably two weeks. And then if you wait till August 18th, instead of maybe August 4th, that'll shave even additional time. So it's just, um, it's just delay. It's pushing it out. So I'm just curious if we can shrink that delay and, and think about what specifically each planning commissioner feels like they need to be comfortable setting a public hearing for, for mid-September.
The, the S and P is different than other things you brought before. This is totally new, totally rewritten. And it's not a modification as an existing one. So we need to read it. I do.
Other comments from, from some of the others?
Scott?
I, well, I mean, I, I want to read it, but again, I think if we set a public hearing for September 15th, we still have, I mean, if we do it, if we get our copy, we still have time to make changes before the 20 days is coming up. But I think we need to get moving so that staff can get the open house started.
Yeah, we're not going to launch the open house and the public outreach until we have that final draft settled. Cause we don't want to put out, we want to put out the final, the planning commission public hearing version and put that out there, be very clear that any changes to that draft are going to happen as a result of and after public hearing and after the many work sessions. I'm sure the planning commission will want to have to digest public comment and make adjustments and changes. So, so yeah, we want to make sure, yeah, that we've, we've landed on the draft. And I think Andy's given the feedback of all those changes that he has made and that based on tonight's guidance, he's going to make.
So when will we have our public hearing draft?
I can make these, so the changes that you guys requested this evening, um, are pretty, pretty basic and pretty easy. So I can probably get that out for next week's, I'd probably do it by, you know, I know we're not, we are meeting in two weeks. I think, uh, push it out next week. And so, you know, I, uh, mid to late next week, you would have it, and then you have another meeting on the fourth.
So, and then also too, after the public hearing, we will still be, definitely working on this.
Absolutely.
I think I'm okay with that.
Would you like to make a motion to do that? On?
That's so moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Sorry, let me back up. Is there any other comments?
Can you repeat the motion, please?
Move to set a public hearing on Thurston County S and P comprehensive and periodic updates for September 15th, 2021 at 7:00 PM. Are there any other comments? So we have a motion and it's been seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anybody else? And all those, all those nays?
Nay.
Yeah, I was going to say, Jim, given that there's, I think, five or there's six planning commissioners, you, you may want to call, you may want to call for a vote, like each individual.
Roll call.
Roll call. And I see we lost Kevin, uh, in just the last moment or two.
So let's do that. And you guys comfortable with that?
Jim, we had two people say no, that obviously, and there's only six of us here, so the motion fails anyway, no matter what.
Oh yeah, we need five.
Yeah, we need five people to say, it has to be an authority of the whole body, not just the authority that's here. So we'd need five.
Okay, so I guess the motion fails and then we'll continue to move forward and try it again in the near future.
So we will come back, uh, so at the August 4th meeting, we can come back. Uh, I think, uh, Jennifer, if I'm still, if correct, there's a little bit of time to add, uh, an S and P item. So, uh, we could, you know, I can bring you back the, the new draft or revised draft based on tonight's comments and we could potentially, um, revisit this again.
Great, Andrew. Thank you.
But you said you could have a draft ready for us next week, right?
Yes, correct. Yeah, I can, I think I can get it out next week. I mean, it's, it's, it's going to be pretty simple, relatively speaking. Uh, but I'm just saying in two weeks, you have another formal opportunity in your August 4th meeting, um, should you wish to make a motion at that time. Okay.
Thanks, Andrew. For your hard work.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great evening, everyone.
Um, staff update, Jennifer.
The only thing is to think about for the August 4th meeting, I was super pleased to hear Christie White during public testimony say she had forwarded, I haven't checked my email, but forwarded a list of potential participants from the Concerned Citizens column of folks. And I know Kate, the lead planner is working hard to, uh, bring you forth names on the wireless facility provider side of the equation. So, um, August 4th, I think we had Commissioner Pestinger already, um, volunteer to also serve on the wireless, uh, stakeholder committee. And then be thinking, you have to decide tonight, but be thinking about if you, because I think it'd be good to have two planning commissioners on that committee if possible. Um, if you would want to serve on that as well. But we'll be bringing those names to you and have that discussion on August 4th. And then we're also using those meetings in August 4th and the 18th to cover other items on our docket. The S and P is one of many, many items on our docket. And we've been pushing some back because we needed to devote this time to get through the S and P. But there will be some, um, brand new material for you to be, uh, considering your August 4th and August 18th meeting. So, um, more to come.
Great. Thanks, Jennifer. So calendar real quick, will anybody be absent on August 4th? How about August 18th? Anybody expecting to be away? Seen none? Is there any other real quick comments that anybody needs to make? That's not good. We're adjourned. Thanks.
Good night, everybody.